The time is six o'clock and the regular meeting of the Dennison City Council is now in session. The invocation will be given by Cheryl Murphy, Pastor Waples United Methodist Church.
Today, I spent the day on business down in Dallas. And as I drove back up here, after all that traffic and all that business, I thought how blessed we are to live here in Dennison. So with that being the spirit of this evening, let us pray. Lord, we thank you for a beautiful day, the gift of this day. We thank you for the opportunity to serve this community in the many ways we do. We are thankful, Lord, that in a time such as this, we consider this our home. We thank you for the gift of these people that have been elected to be wise and brave, to have the courage to lead us into a future that will continue to bless this community and all those that live in them. May your Spirit be upon this meeting and the decisions that need to be made. May your Spirit be one that brings compromise, that brings wisdom, and that brings the brightness of a future that will be a blessing to us all. This night, we pray in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and all God's people, said, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honoring the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. The first item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
There is a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 3A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and conduct a public hearing to receive testimony from the building official on the unsafe condition of the posted structure at 152 Dulittle and take action. Mr. McBride.
On January the 23rd, 2019, Bill G. Vessels and Calix Properties LLC were given notice to repair or demolish the structure at 152 Dulittle. The owners have failed to comply with the notice. The structure is unsafe in accordance with Chapter 5, Article 8, Section 5-833B and H of the Dennison Code of Ordinances. The structure is an attractive nuisance due to the fire. It is a catastrophe. Property tax value is $9,520. Total amount due for 2018 is $276. A record of the violations, notices, and unsafe condition of the property are on file in the Building Department. Staff is requesting council to declare the structure an unsafe structure and order its removal.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Questions for Mr. McBride. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the structure at 152 Dulittle. Order demolition and to authorize staff to proceed with demolition process.
There's a motion by Councilmember Doty and a second by Councilmember Beck. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 3B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and conduct a public hearing to receive testimony from the building official on the unsafe condition of the posted structure at 414 East Shepherd and take action. Mr. McBride.
On January 23rd, 2019, Jeff Norris was given notice of violation to repair or demolish the structure at 414 East Shepherd. The owner has failed to comply with the notice. The structure is unsafe in accordance with Chapter 5, Article 8, Section 5-833F and H of the Dennison Code of Ordinances. The building is not weather tight. The roof is in poor condition. It is creating, it is open, creating an attractive nuisance. Taxes are current on this property. A record of the violations, notices and unsafe condition of the property are on file in the Building Department. Staff is requesting council to declare the structure an unsafe structure and order its removal.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Questions for Mr. McBride. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the structure at 414 East Shepherd a nuisance and unsafe to order demolition and to authorize staff to proceed with the demolition process if granted extension.
There's a motion by Councilmember Guess, a second by Councilmember Adams. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. McBride.
Thank you.
Item 3C, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance changing the zoning of the subject property from single-family five to commercial located at the southeast corner of Maurice Avenue and Bond Street. Case number 2018-135Z. Mr. Doss.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you. As you mentioned, case number 2018-135Z is a request to rezone the subject property from single-family five to commercial. This is the southeast corner of Maurice Avenue and Bond Street, just north of Morton. As you can see, the subject property is currently partially zoned commercial. There is an existing auto repair and accessory and upgrade facility located on that property. The current owner would like to essentially, I think the plan is to sell the existing business and then build his own new garage on the neighboring property. The neighboring property is, of course, a single-family, so that is why we have requested, that's why they requested the rezone to the property. This photo is of what's currently being used as storage for the existing business. This would be the newly rezoned portion of the property. And this is the existing business on Maurice Ave. So we did receive no notices of support or opposition from property owners within the 200-foot notification area. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request, and staff also recommends approval of this request. One note on the motion, we've not yet received back an official approved ordinance, so this motion does need to be subject to final legal review and approval.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Questions for Mr. Doss. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the order changing the zoning of the subject property from single-family five to commercial. Subject to approval.
Final legal approval. There is a motion by Councilmember Greenleaf and a, a motion by Councilmember Greenleaf and a second by Councilmember Beck. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 3D, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance changing the zoning of the subject property from local retail to multifamily one located at 525 West Sears Street. Case number 2018-139Z. Mr. Doss.
Thank you. This item, as you mentioned, is a request to change, change the zoning on the subject property from retail to multifamily one. The reason for that request in multifamily one is to conform essentially to the surrounding property. All of the tan colorless blob you see surrounding the property is multifamily one zoning. However, you can see developed property surrounding the property is single-family in nature except for directly across the street. That's the Vines Apartment Building. So in order to keep the zoning consistent with the area, we did advise them to request that multifamily one zoning district. On this property, as you can see, they've already started their work. They've already poured forms, poured, not poured, they haven't poured anything. They set their forms for their foundation. And then we kind of, in the process of them doing that, we found out, hey, you're zoned for retail, so we need to get you rezoned. So this is the subject property. This is looking to the east on Sears. This is west on Sears, as you can see, even though there is more retail zoning along that northbound street, there's no actual commercial development there. So the rezone to residential district is compatible with the surrounding land uses and existing development. We did receive two notices of support from property owners within that 200-foot notification area and zero notices of opposition. Staff is recommending approval of this request, subject to final legal review and approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval of this request.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Questions for Mr. Doss. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the order changing the zoning of the subject property from commercial to two-family. Subject to final legal review.
There is a motion by Councilmember Greenleaf, a second by Councilmember Beck. All those in favor, please say aye.
Before you vote, we do need, it's multifamily one, not two-family, and we do, we do need the motion subject to final legal review and approval.
Okay. What did?
The motion that I heard was change to two-family. It needs to be multifamily one.
Okay, let's make sure that what we've got here. It's two multifamily, one. You want to, you want to do your motion again, Councilmember Greenleaf?
Okay, this is three at the top.
3D.
I move to approve the order changing the zoning of the subject property from local retail to multifamily one. Subject to final legal review.
There is a motion by Councilmember Greenleaf, a second by Councilmember Beck. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 3E, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance changing the zoning of the subject property from commercial to two-family located at 800 West Shepherd Street. Case number 2018-133Z.
Where do I put it now? I've got a tie on. Is that, is that going to work? Lower? On the lapel, I guess. They told me that I'm not being recorded, which was my secret mission. Case number, item number E, case 2018-133Z, is a request to rezone the subject property from commercial to two-family. The common address for this location is 800 West Shepherd. It's at the corner of Shepherd and Armstrong. As you can see from the aerial photograph, the subject, the subject property is currently zoned commercial. That was done, I believe, back in 2009 when we kind of zoned a lot of these commercial corridors as such. However, we've seen changes in the market that have led these to, they want to go back to residential. This project, this request came about when the property owner started work on that pink building there with the intent to move a resident into the, to his property. And then he initially requested to build another house on this lot, which we had to deny because it's only one lot and it's not zoned for any sort of multifamily development. So since the property is already intended to be used as residential, we did recommend that he request to rezone to that two-family in order to use the property as residential. Now, there's not enough property here to actually build a duplex, so it is still one structure, one dwelling unit for those purposes. But again, we wanted to keep the zoning consistent with what's surrounding it, which is two-family zoning developed as single-family residential. So the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this request. Staff is also recommending approval. We received one notice of support and zero notices of opposition. With that, staff will stand for any questions you may have.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Questions for Mr. Doss. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the order changing the zoning of the subject property from commercial to two-family. Subject to final legal review.
Yes, please.
There is a motion by Councilmember Beck and a second by Councilmember Doty. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Items for individual consideration. Item 4A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on art loan agreement with Tucker Jones and Alexis Thompson for the display of sculptures at Waterloo Lake Park. Mr. Medina.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Bill Medina. I'm the Management Assistant for your Parks and Rec Department. I've prepared something here I'd like to read to y'all and then get into a presentation that we've also prepared, and then stand for any questions you may have. The goal of our park art program, the goal of our park art program is to increase the amenities present at Waterloo Lake Park system and to allow art students to showcase their current projects in a public setting. Placing sculptures will help to increase the aesthetic character and beauty of the facility. While there are several outdoor activities available for the public to partake in, outdoor art appreciation will help to distinguish Dennison Parks from others in the region. This also serves as an opportunity for young artists to build experience working with municipal organizations. Dennison currently hosts a popular art and wine festival in addition to several art galleries on Main Street. Leading staff to believe that an appreciation for their arts is a desire for its residents. This project involves Dennison Parks and Recreation partnering with artists currently enrolled in the University of North Texas Sculpture Department to bring works of art to Waterloo Lake Park on a rotating basis. Students schedule, I'm sorry, students created models and/or sketches of their proposals, which were submitted to the Parks and Recreation Department. City staff, a member of the Parks and Recreation Board, and a member, and members of the Dennison Arts Council have selected which models they would like funded and installed at Waterloo Lake Park. The Parks and Recreation Department has identified two locations for the sculptures, which we'll get into shortly. The artists are responsible for the construction, deconstruction, installation, insurance coverage, and maintenance of the sculptures. The sculptures will be displayed from January 31st, 2019, to March 31st, 2020. So this is basically what I just read. This is the statement that I have prepared just in brief form. Talks about what our goal is, what we're trying to achieve, that is improving amenities in our park systems, and we'll get into the processes for annual rotating public art. So the process here, some of you may have seen the sculptures, the models on display at your library. This began September 15th is when we started meeting with the UNT Sculpture Professor. We first met with them at Waterloo Lake Park, kind of showed them around, explained to them what we were trying to achieve, and gave them a little bit of history of the park and kind of discussed potential locations, helped the artist get a feel for inspiration at that beautiful park. October 10th, we received submittals from the artist. October 30th through the 1st, they were displayed at the library, generally received positive feedback from the community members when I, when I went out there myself and talked to people. December 13th, we began interviewing artists. This was our method of vetting the sculpture artist. It is important to note that the submittals that we received from the artists are part of their grade in their class. So for this year and potential years moving forward, the student will be graded on a public art proposal specifically for the city of Dennison, meaning that we will be part of their curriculum. So we began interviewing artists December 13th. We selected artists on the 7th, and next few slides will show you images of the models. And they are set to be displayed July 31st, 2019, and that will run through March 31st, 2020 will be the display of the sculptures. And the reason that it's not a full year is, given the success of this pilot program and we're able to do this for future years to come, it'll allow students to submit new proposals following the same schedule, these same dates here roughly, and allow for new artists to be selected, interviewed, and then you'll have new art coming in after January 31st, 2020, meaning every year we should have consistent, original sculptures within a budget in Dennison, helping us to stand out, helping our park system stand out. So this is the first piece. It's called Skipping by Alexis Thompson. The sculpture will be two fabricated pieces that will be installed into the ground. They're connected into a 5x5 concrete block. Pretty much she's going to weld these essentially hops to the middle pad in the center with a stone. Our initial thought was to place this really close to the lake. We thought that could be really nice. However, due to flooding, we wanted to kind of set it up further back, and I'll show you the specific locations here in a little bit. This is titled congruence by Tucker Jones. This is the other piece selected. Both of these pieces are made of steel. This piece will also have a protection surface at the base. Because it is a park, we understand that kids like to climb, and we're going to, even though this is a sculpture and it is not a piece of play equipment, we want to make sure that we're able to protect our youngest residents as well in case they do decide to climb up on this. And I've been working with our Maintenance Superintendent to make sure we can have that happen. So this is our budget. We're looking at $3,000 initially, and I say that because if we do this program in years to come, we won't need to charge or budget, I'm sorry, an additional $600 for the concrete pad because it'll be there. We'll just be able to have the artist remove their piece and place the new ones in, in the location already selected. $200 is a rough estimate for informational plaques. Again, that 600, talking with Chip Egger, our Maintenance Superintendent, that will be factored in there as well for any potential fall surface. We're looking at rubberized mulch. And each artist will be awarded $1,100 to fund their pieces, half to be paid prior to the installation and then half after it's been installed. Gives us a little bit of weight there with the contract. And that should be it. One important note is, this artist has already been approved for a grant through the University of North Texas, so if selected and approved, they would be receiving additional funding as well. Any, any costs that would exceed this 1,100, the artist is responsible for paying that out of pocket. Here are the two locations. So the one on the left is near the new dog park. And as you can see, as the trail kind of curves, if we're able to place that orange sculpture in, in that location, somebody walking the trails will be able to take a look at the sculpture from multiple angles and kind of walk around it, creating this really unique outdoor art gallery. And with the upcoming Waterloo Lake improvements with the grant that we received, the second image here on the right is where we'd like to put the skipping stone. So that way, as you're pulling in at this park, you're welcome by this, this beautiful sculpture over the lake. And that's, that's what I have prepared for you tonight.
Questions for Mr. Medina. Bill, are the sculptures going to be labeled? Will they have the name and, and the artist's name on the sculpture?
Yes, that is correct. So we've allocated $200 for plaques, and I'll put the artist's name and the title of the sculpture. The contract as well also mentions that if the, if somebody in the community would like to purchase the piece, they can, they'll just give me a call and say, I really like this piece by Tucker Jones, and I'll connect them with the art, with the artist and see if we can help them out that way.
Thank you.
I know if I may address the art maintenance and everything else and respond with the artist, but I am concerned about the possible vandalism because that's pretty obvious to be passed or come about at all. Um, there has been complaints or a way to protect that or license box or something on top. They all discuss that.
So we've discussed that the pieces will need to stand up against the weather and the elements outside. The artists are aware that the city isn't responsible for any vandalism or damages, and they, they've chosen and elected to go and take in any risk that may come with that. And meeting with the artist ahead of time, I think they kind of planned for potential vandalism, and that's why they went with, with steel, with steel beams as their medium.
Any other questions?
Yeah, yeah.
Mayor, I move to approve the art loan agreement with Tucker Jones and Alexis Thompson for display of sculptures at Waterloo Lake Park and offer up the city manager's order to designate these.
There is a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Let the record show that items 4B and 4C, I need to recuse myself, and Mayor Pro Tim Beck will facilitate these two items.
Let the record show that Mayor God has signed the council chambers. For 4B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a warning bid entered into a contract with Stephen Folchak and DBA SF Landscaping for the 2019 mowing maintenance program authorized by the city manager.
Good evening, council. I'm Chip Egger. I'm the Park Superintendent for Dennison. I'm here to discuss the 2019 mowing maintenance. As you've brought up, this is to enter into an agreement with Stephen Folchak with SF Landscaping. A little background here, this is the second time that we have gone out for bid for the 2019 mowing outsource for the city of Dennison. The first got us one qualified bid that was over our budget. At that time, staff recommended that we reject that bid. Since then, we have, pardon me. Since that time, we have split that into two separate contracts, and we have revisited some of the items on there to figure out the necessary services. At this point, Stephen Folchak has turned in a bid for $224,600, and staff is recommending that we enter into an agreement with Stephen Folchak.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The question is 4C, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a warning bid entered into a contract with Stephen Folchak and DBA SF Landscaping for the 2019 utilities mowing and maintenance program and authorized by the city manager.
Thank you. This is just the second part of that, breaking the contract into two pieces. This is for the, a lot of the smaller, city of Dennison owned lots, lawns, and utility sites and smaller rights of way. This contract broke down to $68,160 between the two contracts, the Between the two contracts, the, the first item that we mentioned and this second one, between breaking it up and minimizing a, a couple of frequencies on some of those sites, we were able to bring that cost down from the first bid that we received last, last summer. We brought that cost down over ninety thousand dollars. So, we would like to enter into an agreement with Stephen Fullcheck for the two thousand nineteen utilities mowing and maintenance program for sixty-eight thousand one hundred sixty dollars. I stand for any questions.
Item four D, receive a report, hold a discussion and take action on a resolution directing the publication of notice of intention to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation to provide funds for waterworks and sewer system improvements. Ms. Wagner.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the Council, is that recording? Excellent. We are now in our fifth year of our capital improvement projects plan for water sewer projects. Council did approve a five-year water sewer rate increase on September eighth, twenty fourteen. And this would support our five-year plan, and so we are in that last year. But, funding this year would be used for N T R A elevated tank, water lines on Teresa and West Floyd Lake, water and sewer system improvements, distribution and collection, and Parkdale Elevated Tower. Bonds will be issued in an amount not to exceed five million seven hundred twenty-five thousand, the actual principal amount is five million six hundred thousand. We have some issuance costs built into that, five point seven million. It would be paid from our waterworks and sewer system, or our water and sewer operating funds with these rate increases that we did implement five years ago. Notice of intent will be published two separate times in February, and then we will request council to pass an ordinance authorizing these certificates in April. Staff recommends adopting the resolution.
Questions for Ms. Wagner? A motion. There is a motion by Councilmember Beck and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Renee. Pursuant to Chapter five five one Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene an executive session to receive legal advice from its attorney and any posted agenda item as permitted by law are to discuss the following. Consult with attorney on a matter in which the attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct conflicts with this chapter and/or consult with attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or contemplated settlement of the same. Confer with attorney and discuss pending litigation regarding seven fifteen West Sears. Before convening into closed session, determine whether any third parties are necessary to the discussion and their presence is lawful. Then confer with attorney and discuss potential claims related to bank trustees of the Smith Foundation. Discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment of duties, discipline or dismissal of or to hear a complaint against a public officer or employee. Discuss, consider and act on appointment to fill position of municipal court alternate judge. Deliberations regarding economic development negotiations pursuant to section five five one dot zero eight seven, update by Denison Development Alliance on pending negotiations and projects. At this time, we'll need a motion to allow Chris McKinney, Ronnie Cole and Sherri Christie to attend our executive session. There is a motion by Councilmember Beck and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. The time is six thirty-four, and we are now in executive session.